Good evening, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday from the board and start our meeting of Monday, December 21st. Chief, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just for all.
Moment of silence. Minutes, do I have a motion for December 7th?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Do we have any public comment?
No.
None? Communications and correspondence, we have two things, we have a letter from the Mashpee Housing Authority Director regarding the Home Assistance Program, of which I'm sure they'll be in when we come time for warrant time, and we also have the Mashpee TV Annual Report, the Board of Selectmen fiscal year 2014.
Just on the Housing Authority piece, I think the letter somewhat obliquely refers to Selectmen who've expressed concerns about the program, I think that means me and Carol Sherman, although it's unclear. I do have a lot of questions about the program and about how the budget figures were arrived at and the criteria for allocating funds and how you determine success and how they quantify the success that happened in the last round of funding that warrants another significant allocation of money for this program. Director suggested that if we had questions that we go meet with her, I guess Carol's indicated a willingness to do that, I guess I would join you, but I do think that, you know, it's appropriate that we have a broader public discussion about this issue at the time we're setting the warrant.
Yeah, at any time. Articles that come before us, of course, we can up or down on any of them, and we always have a hearing beforehand or invite people in to talk about their articles.
So I'm happy to go talk to her, but I think they ought to know that they should plan, unlike last year, to come in and be prepared to justify and talk about this article, or at least for me, I would not vote to put it on the warrant regardless of merits.
Okay.
Anything else? New business, seeing no old business.
On the annual report, MTV?
Okay.
Just, you know, we had a lot of questions, a lot of issues, you know, we had a struggle last year, I mean, I reviewed their report and thought it looked good, I think they had a good, solid year financially, they ended up, you know, increasing their bottom line, carried over a little bit more of an increase or positive balance than they went into the year with, and I think unless anyone has any views to contrary that the service level we expected.
I was very happy with it this year, at least I could read it, I got a feeling what was happening, what was being spent, I'm also very happy with everything that they said they're going to do as far as our studio here goes, have been done, so.
Yeah, no, I just think sometimes when we struggle through these issues and it gets hard, which that was, you know, sometimes we don't ever, we don't take time to acknowledge the fact that they did, ultimately, we came to an agreement, they did what we asked, and the service level, I think, to the people in the town is improved and more in line with what we expected, so I think this is a good way to sort of cap their year and our year with them, to at least acknowledge the fact that we got what we expected, and it seems like it's pretty healthy.
I agree, things seem to be improving.
Yep.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
If any Selectman would like the full detailed audit report, obviously it's available, I just didn't want to make copies for everyone unless you're gonna go over it with a fine tooth comb, but if anybody wants it, you're.
You can have mine, I'm done with it.
Yeah, I went through it in the office, I was sitting there yesterday and today, and I was very, very pleased. In the past, I haven't been, but I think there's been tremendous improvements, not only in the annual report, but I think there's been tremendous improvements with the whole overall operation. I know every time I go to a public event or something, I see them.
Yep.
They're very active in the community, and they seem to be selecting the stuff that the community should see and would want to see.
Like I said, I agree, I think they've really stepped it up and greatly improved, no question on the service.
If there are any follow-up questions from board members, be more than happy to have a representative come in here.
Well, the other thing is, is I want to commend former Selectmen, Wayne Taylor, has been very good at giving us updates too, which.
He's the one that provided the documents.
Through them, and that's kind of, I think, was our biggest problem, we never heard anything before.
Yep, very transparent.
All right, to new business, approval or request for deficit spending for snow and ice, DPW Director, already.
Not a drop of snow.
It's feet appearing, right? I understand that this looks a little awkward because we're asking for you to deficit spend when we haven't had a snowflake, however, the marching orders of the board were to be totally prepared, this supplements our initial salt pile, I've been assured by the DPW Director that this is under the appropriate cover, and this is going to be there for this year, and if we have no snow this year, then it will be there next year, it's not going to go to waste, so this was a good investment for the purposes of having the reserves on hand, so if we did have a bad storm, we're not going to be running out during the second storm.
This is done annually.
Yes, I know, I just wanted to make it a point, it's a little awkward, you know, when we haven't had any snow or ice yet.
And 67 on Christmas Day, so.
I think the motion, we approve the deficit spending of the snow and ice account.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Review and approval of the special events application, May 13th or 14th of 2016, Ragna Relay Cape Cod, this is an annual event.
Are you going to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
John's in, make the motion.
Motion, approve the special events application for Ragna Relay Cape Cod.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Anybody want to join? Lots of fun.
Acceptance of resignation for the Design Review Committee from Mary LeBlanc.
So moved.
I second. Can we send a letter?
Yes, Mary's been on that for quite a while.
Yeah, she's been.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 And a letter will be sent.
Thank you.
She did a great job on a lot of projects.
She did.
Okay, here's the next question that relates to that, discussion of Design Review Committee membership and vacancies. Tom, I know you were talking about it, I know in the past, the Design Review Committee, what are the two committees that combine to meet?
On Tuesday mornings, I believe.
Yeah, but what were the two committees?
It's design and review.
And plan review.
So both of them, they're both separate committees, and I forgot to bring the makeup of them, but the makeup of the committee was you had to have an architect or an engineer, landscape architect or engineer or civil engineer, but that was a requirement.
Architect, landscape, or civil engineer.
Okay. And then zoning Board of Appeal member, Mike Mendoza, the building, he was there as an advisor, not as a member, but as an advisor. I think there was, there were, we had one member from the, from the community voted on by the Selectmen.
I remember when they were put together, it used to be someone had to come in twice between two committees, and it was very confusing.
There was, there were two separate committees, it was Walter Yarish who changed it.
And then they just decided, we'll meet together even though we're separate committees.
Right.
Wouldn't it be more efficient and everything else, especially where these are not regulatory committees, to just create a Design Review Committee that's a single committee?
Design Plan Review Committee?
Yeah.
As one.
As one, yeah.
You could, you could do that.
It's a change of bylaw.
Right, but it has to go to town meeting.
We can do it, yeah.
We just, we can't do it.
No, I didn't mean that, I mean, wouldn't it be a lot easier just to have one committee instead of two chairman and two?
So this is something maybe we can focus on for May?
Yeah.
Yeah. It has to go to town meeting.
It seems like the issue that Debbie's bringing up is that Mike Mendoza serves on both committees.
As an advisor.
As an advisor, so, you know.
We can, you can even correct that by making him a member of both committees if that be the case, but if it was one committee, what I'm saying, you won't duplicate.
Right.
Debbie's concern was the quorum.
Correct, that was my concern because I was watching, there was, there was one member of the Design Review Committee.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
And then we had the approved, the minutes approved by.
And they could have.
You can't, there's no quorum, there's no meeting.
Was it three-member committee?
It's a five-member committee.
What happened is they said we had enough between the two, it's kind of blurred into one committee.
Debbie's saying.
But it's blurred, but there are, there are, they're separate committees, and it's.
I think the best way is just.
I think the best way is for the manager's office to consult with Pat and prepare for your review, proposed bylaw.
Just ban two committees and make one.
Exactly.
It just makes sense.
But just, the, the Design Review Committee was there for basically aesthetics, landscaping, buffers, things of that nature, the Plan Review Committee is the members, is made up of town employees, department heads, to make recommendations as to safety, fire, you know.
That was the original.
Setback, but thus what each plan, each group was there for.
That was the original, but meetings now, it's blurred into one because I've been.
Well, it is, it is blurred, they combine them, and that was, that was done by Walter Yarish, initially he changed it to a Tuesday morning because his meetings were, as, as an architect, he used to go to, for his work in the evenings, so he couldn't do it in the evenings, he was always at a meeting for his clients, so we changed it to a Tuesday morning, and that also, then we combined the two meetings to help the applicant, by combining the two meetings, it would save them from having to go to two separate meetings, but that was, that was why, how this transformation took place, and it was all to the good, I don't, I don't know that, you know, do you, do you make a smaller committee, or do you keep it at the same, a large committee with the design, those for design purpose, which work for the town's needs, safety and setback, all of those regulatory issues, and then the aesthetic purpose, which is the Sign Review Committee, which is basically.
But basically, you've got to remember, it's not a regulatory committee.
No, it's not.
You're, you're making suggestions to your conservation committee, to your planning committee, your board of appeals.
The Design Review Committee is, is the planning board's committee.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not.
No, not regulatory, but you, you report to the planning board and they take that.
I realize that, but if you have one committee, and whoever designs it, you know, maybe you have an architect on it, although I know we have an awful time finding architects at some time, but if you had one that would cover everything, that, you know, the biggest thing is, is I think, at times it's been totally crazy going before, and that's why it was changed, you go before one committee, and then two days later you go before another one, but I answered that question Monday.
It'd be nice if we could come up with a solution that would.
One committee.
Only require people to come in and appear once and not have to pay their professionals twice.
And I think that was the intent.
Of that committee.
Of this.
So in the short term, should we do what Debbie suggested, which is appoint Mike as a temporary?
I would, yes.
All right, so I make a motion, we appoint Mike to the Design Review Committee.
Temporary. Temporary capacity.
Well, we're going to be disbanded.
Until the end of the fiscal year.
I second.
In that way, at that point, six months, that's temporary.
I second that.
Right, will that give us a quorum?
Uh, no, I don't know.
We have to advertise the other two vacancies.
We have to advertise the other two positions.
Till two vacancies, but at least.
I think out of the, I think under the open meaning law of the Article of Necessity, if you've got more than, if you don't have a quorum but you've got more than one, they can act, so at least it allows you to get out of this position of having a sole member, and they can act legally.
Right, and that, that's what brought it to my attention.
Silly, you're right.
I'm looking at the minutes and I just, where are we going with this? We don't have a quorum.
Right, so at least this lets them function temporarily, the other thing is, it allows us, it says in here that we can, we can give approval for them to acquire the services of an architect, landscape architect, or civil engineer.
Correct.
I would suggest we authorize that.
Right, and that's at the expense of the applicant.
Right, so that at least they get the benefit of that expertise now that Mary has had to resign.
Right.
So modify the motion to do both those things.
That, that makes sense.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 That was two, with the added comment about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kathy's all right. She's good.
Is that enough for you, Sam?
Review and approval memorandum of understanding Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge. Are you going, who's getting up?
I'm getting up. Do I have to use the phone?
It's fine with us.
Give us something to duck behind.
Yeah. So my name's Drew McManus, I'm the conservation agent for the town of Mashpee, and you have before you, it's a memorandum of understanding for the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge. The MOU, I'll just give you kind of a brief overview of what my experience is with, and working with the refuge as a representative of the Conservation Commission. The MOU is basically a framework for all the partners that make up the refuge on how to go about managing it, and the primary activities that happen on the refuge are wildlife habitat improvements and wildfire abatement, wildfire safety. So when you read through the MOU, and it's, it's a lot of reading, so I'm not going to get into the particulars, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have after my description, but you'll see that it goes into detail about identifying who the partners are and who their, what their roles are in the refuge, it establishes communication protocols amongst the partners, management protocols, access, and it's completely non-binding. So it really is just kind of like a communication framework for all the partners to work with. In my experience in dealing with the refuge partnership and being a part of the partnership over the years, back from 2009, the Conservation Commission and the town of Mashpee has received literally tens of thousands of dollars of habitat improvement and wildfire abatement work because of this MOU and because of our partnership with other members of the, of this very unique partnership refuge. We've had a number of parcels that have been managed for rare species, including the New England Cotton Tail, which has recently just avoided being listed on the endangered species list because of all the work that's being done on the refuge to improve its habitat. Also, we've, we've been able to be the benefactors of a lot of wildfire abatement work, which has improved safety in some of these subdivisions and developed areas through town that abut these large parcels. So my role with the Conservation Commission has been kind of a go-between, between the commission and the partners whenever these activities are occurring on our lands, I inform the commission of what types of habitat and wildfire activities are happening, get their permission and their oversight and their, any comments that they have or concerns. But really, the emphasis on this is really just how much benefit the town has received from being a part of this partnership, and I'll have Tom Eagle speak to the importance of having this MOU signed and what that means for the town, so I'll hand it over to Tom.
Thanks, my name's Tom Eagle, I'm a refuge manager with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service stationed at Eastern Massachusetts National Wildlife Refuge Complex, all the way in Sudbury, we manage eight refuges in Massachusetts and Mashpee being one of them. In 95, the refuge was established as a partnership refuge in where we are just one of several landowners that manage almost, or a little over, well, almost 6,000 acres of protected land, work closely with the town of Mashpee, town of Falmouth, Mass DCR, Mass Wildlife, Orinda Wildlife Trust, Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, and just work together to improve wildlife habitat, and then in 2008, we started working really heavily on reducing the risk of wildfire, and that has really kicked off, and then it overlapped into New England Cotton Tail work and shrubland protection, and just enhancing young forest, which is a very unique habitat, and the pitch pine scrub oak that a whole suite of rare species rely on, and we couldn't do it without this partnership, we couldn't do it on our own, the town can't do it on their own, the state can't do it on their own, and we come together, whether it's for a prescribed burn, or whether it's for, you know, doing some kind of tree thinning, or whether it's to open up a public use trail or do stream restoration, we're really big into brook trout restoration as well, and we do it on, it doesn't matter whose property boundary it is, we all come together and rally for the support of it, and, you know, this document is, like Drew said, it's just a framework, it's just, it's a requirement that kind of binds it all together, we, we've been doing this for quite some time now, in 95, the original MOU was established mainly to bring the partners together to protect the land, purchase land, build the refuge, and now it's developed into so much more, and now we need to manage those lands and take care of the lands that we have protected and, and make them endurable to the public, you know, make sure the trails are maintained, make sure we have good viewing platforms, overlooks, parking lots, and also to make, make sure we're taking care of the habitat that we, you know, took in trust for the public, and making it safe, and the biggest thing is the wildfire protection and reducing the chance that a major wildfire could, you know, impact the communities and the increased development in this area, and we have large tracts of very volatile forests, and history, you know, shows it that it has the potential, and so those are our priorities, and this just, you know, allows us to work together, it's just a formality, like Drew said, it's non-binding, there's a, there's an exit clause that if anybody's not happy, you know, within so many days, they give notice and get out, it's just, it's our lowest form of legal agreement, you know, it's not a contract, it's, you know, doesn't hold anybody's feet to the fire, doesn't obligate any funds from anybody, doesn't force anybody's hand to do anything.
This lets you, our signing this would allow you to continue to actively manage these lands, without it you can't, is that my right interpretation?
We can do certain things, but there are certain things we can't, and one of the biggest examples is, is prescribed burning, one of the most limited resource in prescribed burning is the role of a burn boss, and that's the person that is in control that day, takes on most of the liability, I mean, we're all liable, but this person is the lead, he's the one responsible. Traditionally, other than performing this duty on our lands, which is only about 350 acres within the refuge that we own, our personnel cannot serve that role, so the town has had to contract these services out, tens of thousands of dollars, or $3,000 a day is the fee for this person to come in and bring their resources and put their, you know, liability in line, by signing this MOU in here gives us the authority to serve in that role on your lands and come in and, and save the town, you know, thousands of dollars and be burn bosses on that, we oversee contracts on town land, we put federal fire funds towards the thinning of these forests, towards the construction of fire breaks, without it being, you know, written that that's what we're going to do in this document, this, you know, this really does, we're just kind of hanging out there, this kind of formulates it, our fire folks and our regional office, people in Mass DCR, Mass Wildlife are now holding this document, they've already signed it, they're holding this document up in front of their new commissioners, and saying, you know, this is why we're taking our staff now today to go work over here on town of Mashpee land.
Can we ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Before we get to it, chief, who's paying all this money now for these burns? Is it town?
No.
It's not, I didn't think so.
But we will if we can, don't get this done.
Tom Rulo, the fire chief, so, no, it's not coming out of the town's money, I am using training money and overtime to support them.
Which you would anyways.
Which I would anyways, and I think what, you know, what they're trying to tell you is, this is, this is kind of like a handshake agreement, and it's actually very, very unique even in the country for all these partnerships, which includes the tribe as well, and for, usually state and federal do a lot of stuff together, but state, federal, local, and outside interests, private partnership groups, very odd.
Do these, chief, do these burns improve the fire safety in the community?
Absolutely, that's the biggest thing, when I got here in 2012, Chief Baker and I had talked about it, I'm sure that if you.
I'm not questioning the burns, I just, when Jock, he just said, I thought we're paying thousands of dollars that we didn't know about.
No, but the other thing that this is allowing us to do is to get some grant money, that's where all this is coming from, so.
Can I ask the opposite question, if we don't have this partnership, and you want to maintain the level of fire suppression that comes with these burns, would we be picking that cost, would that be something that would shift to us?
It's very, very expensive.
Huh?
We would bear the burden of that cost.
Who has been up to now, that's my question.
We've been very strategic and very creative, and so when I came, I came out in 2007, kind of started this in 2008, 2009.
Yeah, okay.
And so in that time, it was.
You don't have to, I just all of a sudden heard these thousands, and I knew we, I didn't think we had paid.
I think one of our benefits of signing this is that we would not.
That's all I needed to know.
So, just real quick.
That's all I needed to know.
It's probably closer to hundreds of thousands that we've spent in federal money on these properties.
When we do a burn, they're bringing four or five people, we're bringing three people, it's just, pretty cool.
I'm very, very, very well aware of been doing it, but I, all of a sudden, I thought, I had always have done an impression that it wasn't costing us anything.
No, I have a question, it, you say you, we have an MOU already, but it doesn't include the fire?
It was very bare bones.
We don't have, the MOU ran out, I believe, yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
I've been working with everyone, you know, everyone to update it to the standards of today.
Okay, and I don't think you're going to ask her much further than this, one more question, has everyone signed on so far?
Everyone except for town of Mashpee and the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe.
Okay.
That was the last round of edits, we're.
I would like to, when we, if, I'm assuming we'll do this, that we put the stipulation that our signature's good when everyone signs.
How does it work if not, if one of the partners doesn't sign?
Just move on without it.
You don't need it?
No.
I mean, if we sign, if we would sign you, we could move forward without anyone else?
Absolutely, and that's really what I'd like to do.
Let me ask you this, what, what restrictions does this bring to the land, what use restriction does it bring?
Absolutely none, and never has.
It's not about restrictions, it's about. Sorry. It's not about restrictions, it's just about a communication framework, how we're going to, you know, take on a particular project, what the protocols are for notifying each partner if activity's happening on their land, providing necessary official access.
Do you come before us too, when you're going to do something to the land?
Well, I haven't come before you in the past, but I'd be happy to moving forward, I've come before the commission because the lands are in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission, whenever activities happen to be taking place on those lands, but I'd be happy to come before the board as well if, if you would like that, that would be fine with me.
Same here.
My concern, and bottom line is, the fire burn, all of that, I control burns, I understand the value of that, there's no doubt, but it's just, I don't want the citizens to lose any of their rights to the, and use of the properties, or restricted use of the property.
No, there's nothing, we actually want to increase, we want to get the refuge on the map and get more people to know about it and get more people out there, because it's probably one of the larger refuges, refuges on the northeast that most people aren't aware of, so getting it on the map and getting it out to the public and getting the public out there is of the top priority.
Yeah, I mean, one of the aspects. I mean, one aspect of this, you know, our public, our economic development strategy was to try and promote increased use of, of our public lands as a way to attract people to the community.
Green tourism.
Absolutely. And so I, I saw nothing in this that, that limited our ability to promote and, and use our properties as we see, as we see as a community fit without interference.
That's why I asked if he would come before us.
Yeah.
I'd like to add that, you know, in 2013, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, we sponsored a visitor services review, which was a committee formed from our region of public use visitor services expertise. And, you know, it could have been just for, again, our 300 acres to evaluate, but we, we brought in the whole refuge, and this team met with all the partners, and we came up with a plan on how to improve visitation and, and public use on all these lands, trail connectivity, parking area, you know, improvements, a canoe launch and boardwalk, all these projects are in the works. Same goes for our master planning, our comprehensive conservation plan that we've been working on. Again, we're only legally required to do it for our 350 acres, but we included the entire refuge in this plan.
I mean, one thing I thought was significant that you said that sort of flew under the radar is, you know, the successful activity they've engaged in to keep that cotton tail off the endangered species list, the amount of restriction of land that comes with a listing on the endangered species.
Yeah.
The fact that through this partnership, we're able to both bring back that species and keep it off the list so that it didn't impact people's abilities is a huge benefit that no one will ever be aware of because it's hard to, hard to prove the negative, right? But, you know, the fact of the matter is, if that, you know, those types of proactive land management, species management things that come with this, you know, help the species, but they also help the rest of us who want to use that land in a way that's similar to what we've been doing. I think that's a huge benefit to us.
We're currently moving on to the next species at PCRM, which is the northern long-eared bat. And we've been doing acoustic monitoring on our property as well as some town property and tribal lands. And what we're finding out is that the bat populations are in major decline everywhere, but on the Cape, they're, they're doing really well, and we are a hotspot for northern long-eared bat, which is, again, it could be a candidate for endangered species list until we, unless we can prove.
And they eat a lot of mosquitoes.
Yeah. All of them are great, yeah, great animal, yeah.
True, true.
Bring them in.
Mr. Chairman, is appropriate to make a motion at this time?
Sure.
To make a motion that the board selectmen execute the memorandum of understanding for the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge.
I'll second the motion.
The one thing is, will you make sure when this gets all, everyone signs, we get a copy for our records here?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Yes.
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 I will, I will just add this, that there will come a time that, you know, I'm not going to wait forever for the last signature.
No, no, that was not in there.
And I will, you know, just call it it, you know, done, and give you guys a copy.
Yeah, that was not part of that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, I have the signature page. When do I get it signed?
Doing it right now if you want.
Do you have, with all the other signatures on?
Yes, I do.
Let me give you the right one here. Why am I carrying this thing around?
Oh, yeah. Do you mind signing both just so that we can have them?
Yeah, and then a later version, folks had recommended that the chairman of the Conservation Commission be added as a signatory, so you have to get that as well, so.
Okay, our next meeting is January 28th.
Okay, yeah. So I'll be here for that, I guess.
I can.
Yeah, probably not, right?
What's today, today?
21st.
This is one you're going to make sure we get a copy of, right?
Exactly.
True. 21st?
21st.
Can you just make a copy and leave one right at the, there you go for me?
Sure.
I will leave that, Drew. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a nice night.
I guess school committee dug into the budget, and right now there's, it's a still working budget, but they're, they've come down a bit and, but I guess right now they approved to, they approved their working, their new working budget. So they're sharpening the pencil, if you will.
Have they talked, their sessions in your presence about the status of the internal investigation? It was due November 13th, it's now December 21st.
It's not, it did not come up at the last meeting.
Strikes me as.
It was, it was questioned.
Extraordinarily overdue.
I, I think there was some delays from my understanding, the little I do know.
Yeah.
I believe there was some delays in speaking to certain people, and that may have been cleared up. And I, I'm, my understanding is, and again, it's only an understanding, that that may have been the delay for, for whatever reason. I don't know what that is.
Clearly, there's a delay.
Yeah.
Six weeks, six weeks overdue. So maybe Inspector Coussot can get on his horse and get this thing done before, for the new year.
You, if you want to go on audit, you want to bring in this waste, solid waste committee. We have completed our task, and they're assembling the list of recommendations to bring to the board of selectmen, and I will bring them to you probably in the second, the second meeting of January, with the holiday season, give the secretary time to put it together. And the guys did a great job. It was, it was a tough committee to be on, John, John can attest to that, but.
Yeah, I bailed out.
Yeah. There were times I think everybody wanted to bail out, John.
Well, it looks like a lot bailed out, right? I mean.
They did. It was, it was a tough, it was a tough committee.
You used to have like 15 people, and it looked like there was only.
Well, to be very honest.
Seven, seven left, eight?
To be very honest, I sat there listening to all the thing, and it was all the, what were we going to tell the selectmen, what were we going to tell the selectmen? And I'm the selectman, I gotta say yes and no what they're talking about, so why the hell do I have to stay here now?
It was coming back to you anyway, so.
Yeah.
But that's what it stands to.
He couldn't move, he was chairman.
Yeah. And not initially. But that's it.
Carol?
CPC, we met, we're bringing all the.
Yeah, well.
All the goodies to the.
We'll see all them at Warren time.
Those will be coming forward.
By this wish list.
Yeah.
Human Services, they're very, very active this Christmas season with the different projects going on in town and whatnot. And our meeting, next meeting will be to discuss the Thanksgiving awards, which will probably be given out at the end of January 1st or February.
Nothing new.
Good.
I will entertain a motion.
One more comment. I just, I'm not sure how it works, but the legislative annual.
Oh, the MMA?
Yeah, in January.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if anyone intends to go or.
I plan on going for some of it at least. When last year, I found it to be pretty useful.
Just kind of food for thought, if you will, if.
It's the third weekend in January, thankfully.
Correct. So I was, I was considering it myself, so.
Yeah, I'm going up for a day myself.
I'm going to go for the day.
I'm going to go myself. I am planning to go.
Good.
It's valuable.
Yeah.
You can jump in on a seminar and learn a lot.
I don't know how that works, if we have to register?
Christine will, if you let Christine know, she'll take care of registration.
She's taking care of the registrations for all, and some have just gone up for the day, I believe in the past, and some have gone up and stayed overnight. And I think the, where is it, the Sharon?
It's at the, yeah, or the.
At the Prudential Center.
The Prudential Center.
Yeah, so that's the Sharon.
Yeah.
Where I park for the Red Sox.
The time I've gone, the opening ceremony, the opening speaker each time, been incredible.
Yeah.
Really.
Typically, they get the governor, he gives them for a preview of what's coming on local aid and, you know.
Usually he announces it.
Yeah, but it's usually a pretty good opportunity. The syllabus is out now, so you can see if there's any.
Who's going to.
Particular sessions that are of any particular interest. But then it's good to just go talk to other members of the boards.
And if you need the syllabus, we have it in the office.
Okay.
Because that's one of the things I asked Christine, just to see if there was anything that piqued my interest, and there was.
I find it interesting. I mean, I know the, and it seemed like on the, from a local level, they're going to try to get together on Friday evening.
What they typically do is that the individual selectmen's associations meet on-site prior to, the night before, the meeting of the whole body where they put forward the, the motions for policy and platform and elect officers. So it's an opportunity for the broader selectmen's associations, they're specific to each region, to get together, discuss, meet with staff, discuss in some more detail what the resolutions are, and, you know, take a position as a, as a regional body.
Great. I will accept the motion.
So moved.
What do you, what's the motion?
The move, motion is to.
Wants to go home.
Close the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 [end of transcript]